Did I do what I had forgotten and Walter reminded me. The vote on the bond issue is no longer two thirds to pass. It's three fifths. However, that affects. It's about twenty five, twenty six, seven past ten. And we need to wait until closer to ten minutes of eleven. Before we can see what the what the vote was, if they're tabulated by them, they might not be. But we are ready now to go ahead with warrant article number two. General municipal operation. This is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four million nine hundred twenty six thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations in special or individual articles addressed separately, such as ones that we would be saying yes or no to today. Do I hear a motion to?
Roll the motion.
Oh, we do.
Second.
Good morning and thank you. Over the past year, we've had some increases. Not due to anything that we did, but it's because of services and projects needed by the town. The increase in our budget is approximately eleven point eight percent. And it entails many, many things. But what I'd like to remind you of first, your tax bill that you received in November had a reduction of ninety five cents per thousand based on the approximate cost or the evaluation of your home. So everybody in this room received at least two, three, four, five, or six hundred dollars in tax relief. That same tax rate will be applied in mid-June. So it's a double win. So what we're going to talk about right now is how to improve and retain our workforce. They are your workforce, not ours, but yours. As the legislators present today, I urge you to accept this budget. I know that there's a lot of hard feelings about a double-digit increase for some of our employees. It is well deserved and we need to retain the goodness of these people. Not all of them live or reside in Brentwood, but they travel to serve you on a daily basis. One of the complaints that I heard during the pandemic was that we closed the town office from noon until one. We were able to eat for the first thirty minutes. And the second thirty minutes was to sanitize and clean all of the surfaces and rooms in the town hall so you, our clients, could come in and feel safe. So that was a bogus complaint and I really, really didn't think it was necessary. We work very hard on a daily basis. We have dynamic people. I would like to recognize our town administrator is one of the strongest, most knowledgeable people in that position in the state. There is not a question that she cannot answer or research within minutes to solve all of our issues. Please be kind to us and vote yes.
I would also like, and I know Susie Curtis had brought this up earlier about the Economic Development Committee as far as commercial lands, and I'd like to invite Kristin and Matt from our Economic Development Committee to come up here and speak about that so you can understand how that works. And that's going to be, that is in our budget also, which is a new committee that was formed. So if they could come up, that'd be great.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Kristin Alford-Cheek. I'm a member of the planning board and a planning board representative for the Economic Development Committee.
Hi, I'm Matt Bonafidi. Ten years of Brentwood, a member of the Economic Development Committee and a trustee.
So the Economic Development Committee was formed in the past year. It was a recommendation of the planning board and then it was approved by the select board. We put together a group of volunteers with expertise in data science, public relations, real estate, sustainability, engineering. So we have a really incredible group of people who are working hard to look at how can we encourage investment in our commercial zones in Brentwood? And do that in a way consistent with what everything in the town wants, including preserving our rural character. So we've been doing a number of things and let's talk about a community survey.
Yeah, so hopefully a few of you saw notification a few weeks back. We did a community survey that was open to all Brentwood adults. There were, it was available online. We had hard copies available in the library in town hall. A hundred and thirty of you responded. So thank you if you responded. If you didn't, don't worry, you'll get a chance to do it again. This is just our first activity, but hopefully many. You know, I have a lot of respect, I'm a little bit scared of going over time with Dick here, so I'm going to keep this down to three minutes. We have a lot of responses. We will do a full presentation eventually. Just going to hit on a couple of the key notes. One of the things we asked you guys about was what are the key assets our town has? And number one was our rural character. When we asked you what our priorities should be, number one was protecting our rural character. A close second was helping reduce the residential tax burden. When we asked you guys where we should develop, overwhelmingly, the answer was 125, our common rural highway. That was eighty percent of you said that. And when we asked, what did you guys want? Eighty percent of you said you wanted a restaurant. Thank you for making my job as the data analysis expert easy and making such clear responses. We're going to go into more detail on that. We're going to ask you guys to change what we're doing. We're going to ask you guys to validate what we're coming up with. But I just wanted to leave with, you know, you're setting our priorities. Clearly, you've told us protecting our rural character and finding ways to reduce the residential tax burden should be our clear priorities. So thank you for saying that. Thank you. I thank you in advance for your future participation when we ask you more questions.
From the budget committee's perspective, I'll just let you know that this operating budget is a seventy-three cent increase per thousand or about three hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents on a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home. It was seventy-three cents per thousand valuation. So three hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents on a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home.
Jim, you're on. Jim Barlow, Scrabble Road. I realize I don't have the votes here to amend this number down. I just want everyone to be aware. The town is asking for five million dollars. Swayze School is at six million dollars. Our rural community, us forty-five hundred people or so, have the cost this year alone of eleven million dollars just in general government in Swayze School.
Derek Wallace, Three Old Danville Road. If I could get a little brief explanation on, there's at least three items that went up over a hundred thousand dollars over actual expenses. We got personnel administration, fire, and highways and streets.
The highway department has always asked for the last several years for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually to resurface and maintain the road system. That's a warrant. That's not it. Three fifty, excuse me. I realize it's a warrant, but to talk about what the highway department is doing. They are doing much more than they have done in the past. The culvert system in our town was in great need of repair, which they worked very hard for. This past year, we had some snowstorms that cost more money. So we're trying to anticipate what's going to happen in the future. Salt has almost doubled in its cost. And this year so far, we've spent thousands of dollars more than we had anticipated. The sand is also an issue. Now, as far as the administration, it is to bring our employees, your employees, to a workable wage so we can ensure retention. And your third one was? The fire department. I know this is an old story. You're all very, very tired of hearing it. But last year, we missed over one hundred calls for service, primarily for ambulance service. I understand mutual aid is always available to us. But I asked you earlier this morning, would you rather wait seven or eight minutes for an ambulance or nineteen to thirty minutes for mutual aid to call? I personally had the experience of calling for an ambulance several years ago at six fifteen in the morning, and I was in the Exeter Hospital within twenty-one minutes. My heart wasn't working as well as it should have at the time. It's not much better today, but I'm here.
I just, I want to bring up that we did a survey of salaries on all the positions we had. Karen and a lot of the other departments did check. Just to see if we were in line with with other communities. And we looked at Greenland, Kingston, Raymond, Sandau, Danville, Fremont as towns that we could look and see what they are paying their employees in a similar position. And we had to do wage adjustments in order to make sure that they were all in line. You know, we're not the, we're not paying the most, we're not paying the least. We're paying, what is the going rate for those positions? And we do have seller employees that we have to recognize that we don't want to lose. You know, if I have somebody that's working at the highway department and they're making nineteen dollars an hour and they can go down the street to the Walmart distribution center for twenty-five, why would they say? So we had to do some wage adjustments in order to try to bring everyone into the current market. Otherwise, we're going to lose those employees and then we have to start over again. Same thing works with fire, same thing works with police department. We have to recognize that everything's getting more expensive and we have to stay consistent with the market or we're going to price ourselves either out of the market if we go too high. Or if we're too low, we're going to lose the talent and we're going to have to retrain everybody again and start over. And I know just for the police department, if we put somebody through training, I think that's like thirty?
Two thousand dollars?
Forty thousand dollars? Forty thousand dollars if we have to start over again. I don't want to put, I'm sure we don't want to put forty thousand dollars every couple of years into one person and then start over again a couple of years later. And then that just affects the budget even more. So that's the reason why we have some significant increases. But we also had some positions that we eliminated in order to make this more powerful and be more efficient because our staff is more efficient. So we look at how to make them more efficient across the board. So if we could pay and recognize people for talents that they're going to take.
Just a comment on that. These are like twenty-five, over twenty-five percent increases. I'd like to see a raise of that.
Can I ask a question?
Where are you?
When the wage comparisons were done with those other towns, was it for simply the wages or was it total compensation, including insurance, health insurance and everything?
Wages and experience. One thing that I failed to mention in my presentation was that the New Hampshire retirement system also dramatically increased. Six years ago, the state paid forty percent of the retirement program. Today, they pay an astounding zero. Who else would like to come to the mic?
Actually, my question wasn't answered. Was the comparison only for wages or was it a total compensation package?
Wages and experience.
Does that help the issue?
The answer is compensation was not included. Is that correct?
The issue you get into is New Hampshire retirement and everything else, those are community-driven. And we are, for like our insurance, for example, we do a municipal pool. So it's going to be very similar in benefits and everything else because we're joining with a lot of those other municipalities so we can offer the same benefits to our employees that they're getting in the other communities. So this was specifically just wage and based on the experience of the years that they've had in those positions. And that's how we did our analysis.
So just for clarification, it's been a concern of the budget committee for several years, the health insurance that we pay for our employees in town. And there was a committee established last year to look into that and to ways that it could be decreased. That committee didn't come up with any recommendations this past year. I do hope that they will make some progress there for next year. But I just wanted it to be clear that the comparison was wages, not necessarily the total amount that each employee makes. That was my one reason for asking.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. Yes, Becky.
I don't have my card, but Becky's down at Nine Block Drive in Brentwood. I worked for a large school for many years and just about five years before I retired, instead of just getting my regular annual letter about what my wage, my salary is going to be, they produced a document that showed me what they were giving me in wages, insurance, any other benefits, so I could see what the entire package was costing the institution. And I think that adds value so your employee knows that you're supporting that individual in many ways. And when they compare Fremont and Brentwood, they're going to see the whole package may be better to stay in Brentwood. It's just my comment that it should be the whole package that is given to every employee so they can see exactly what the town is paying to retain them.
I believe that's an excellent suggestion and I'm sure the board in the future will consider that. Any further discussion? I'm going to ask for a vote to see if you're ready to vote because this is a pretty big one. All those in favor of voting signify by saying aye. Those opposed? I guess we're in favor of voting.
Let's move the question.
Questions removed. All those in favor of article number two signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Article two has passed. Now we're moving on to article thirteen, twelve. Mr. Moderator, who would like? No reconsideration? There is a request for a ballot vote.
Need the microphone.
Thank you. There is a request for a ballot vote from five people, six people. Would the six people stand up please so that we can see that there are six of you? One, two. Excuse me? There was a motion on the floor for? Restricting the guns. Yes. You know, I was hesitant to think because I read in the article this morning that we don't have to restrict the bond. We're not on the blockchain. Good one, Dick. Okay, let's go ahead with the restriction. Request. On article two, restriction on article two. Is there a second? There's a second. All those in favor of restricting article two, signify with your cards and voice. All those opposed to restricting. Okay? And again, again, the reason, for those of you who will do it to us, the reason for restricting after an article has passed is that long ago, that didn't happen. There wasn't a restriction on articles. But what did happen was, and the meetings were in the evening, and it got to be around ten or ten-thirty in the evening. And many people had left instead of staying for the whole time. Sometimes, once in a while, occasionally, the folks who were left brought back up the same article again and tended to vote the opposite way that it had been before. And that really faked out some people the next morning when they got up and turned on the radio. So you have, you have locked it in by restricting, you've locked it in. Okay, now. We have got the appropriate number of people that have asked for a secret ballot on warrant article twelve after we finish discussing it and you're ready for a ballot vote. Let me read it. Warrant article number twelve is the Brentwood Newsletter. It's one of two articles on the Brentwood Newsletter. And I would remind you again that the second one, warrant article thirteen, is strictly for information for the Board of Selectmen, for the select board. Article thirteen, when we get to it, will be a full discussion. But what we're looking for is a straw vote. Article twelve, newsletter, recommended by both the selectmen and the budget committee to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars for the purpose of printing, postage, and distribution plus the eight issues of the Brentwood Newsletter.
Motion to accept the article is read.
Is there a second to that? Okay, now.
What was that, Dick, we didn't hear?
Motion to accept the article is read. Ken, reduce to it. Yes. And then then, Michelle, if you have anything that you want to say to it. You can. We will open this up for discussion. The monthly newsletter cost has increased to sixteen thousand two hundred dollars annually or fourteen hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-three cents per month. This is the cost for the eight issues for the rest of 2022. I personally feel, and I'm going to give you my personal feeling, that we need the newsletter as a whole. I know that there's been many, many other people who feel that it doesn't serve the needs that it did for so many years. Currently, we have a contract pending with the newsletter. We were notified recently that they have some disagreements with the proposed contract that the select board sent to them. So that has to be worked out. It is a valuable organizational item to our town. And when we met in May, the majority voted to retain the newsletter with some tweaks. Those tweaks are slowly but surely being addressed. So once again, I would encourage you to vote in favor of this warrant article.
From the budget perspective, because this amount was in the budget last year, it's now obviously been taken out and put in a warrant article. But the difference is from what was in the budget last year to what this warrant article is would be point zero one six three cents per thousand or ninety-three cents on a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, we're open for discussion.
Let's do Chairman Bob Stevens, sixteen more to drive. As the Chair of the Constitution Commission, I can assure you that the newsletter is invaluable to us to disseminate information here in town. I hope you all vote in favor of this warrant article.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Somebody else?
I am not going to recommend or not recommend that any of you vote for this warrant article, but I would like to share some facts in regards to what has gone on. Over the last two years, there have been a lot of people criticizing, damning, demeaning, and insulting the Brentwood Newsletter and the people involved with it. There were presumptions and opinions and outright lies without any direct personal conversation with any of the people involved with the newsletter. In 2020, a warrant article demands failed by the people, but the integrity of the Brentwood Newsletter team purpose them to meet most of the requests anyway. That wasn't enough. There was then a demand for a contract. Over the following year, neither the town administrator nor the Board of Selectmen reached out to the Brentwood Newsletter team to negotiate a contract. Instead, it was an item on the agenda for a board meeting. Contract negotiations do not happen at board meetings. Historically, there was a very cordial relationship between the Brentwood Newsletter and the town. Standard procedure was the town would provide a check to the Brentwood Newsletter the day after town meeting to cover the costs for a year. But not in 2022. The town decided to change the rules and wanted a monthly invoice. Again, the Brentwood Newsletter complied and requested the first monthly payment. The check for one issue was picked up and the January issue was produced and sent out. On January twenty-fifth, an invoice was submitted by the BNL for February with a request that the editor be contacted by phone or email when the check was ready. Three weeks later, Ken Christensen, who has helped fold the newsletter just about every month, emailed the newsletter to ask the date of the February folding. The editor responded, including a copy of the February invoice that had been sent three weeks prior. The response from Ken was that Karen had mailed a check on February second, 2022. The initial invoice that was sent was very clear, asking for a phone call or an email when the check was ready. Neither of those happened. It has now been six weeks. Still no phone call, no email, no check. Perhaps we could have an explanation on that? Was a check ever mailed? Have other bills paid at the same time gone missing? And if in fact the check was mailed and no newsletter had been produced, one would think there would be an inquiry as to why. I share all of this with you to show you how the town has treated the volunteers at the BNL. These volunteers who have given thousands of hours of time to produce an informative and helpful publication, which many in town have come to rely on. Remember that production of the newsletter has never cost the town anything. The town is only paid for a portion of printing and mailing costs. The treatment by this town and its leadership, to me, is shameful and completely lacking in professionalism. What's truly sad is that you don't even realize what you have broken. Not just the wonderful publication and historical capture of our town, but the spirit of volunteerism. I hope no other volunteer, a group of volunteers, has to experience what your neighbors at the Brentwood Newsletter have gone through. And I pray this experience is not a sign of the Brentwood to come.
That's a lot to take in. Listening, some of us do better listening, some of us do better watching on the screen and so forth. This may not be appropriate, but is there any way you can give us a summary of what you'd like? What you would hope for that would be better in the future?
I'm just sharing information about what we, what we experienced because I am one of those people on the Brentwood Newsletter team. You can make your own determination on that, but it's actually really a sad representation of how the select board has treated us.
What would you like to have the select board do differently?
Maybe be honest in the future? Was a check ever mailed?
The check was mailed on February second. Talking about the check, they sent us an invoice on the twenty-fifth. We only produce and sign checks on the following Tuesday. So the timeline has to do with town procedures and accountability. And I really, truly am upset with your words. We did not do anything, I'm speaking for Ken Christensen deliberately, to the newsletter. I have been a folder for twenty years or more.
I have been a folder for 20 years or more. I believe in the document, and we did nothing deliberate.
I don't know if the, I know the check is still not been cashed, if I remember correctly. So I don't know if it was requested to have it stopped paid, or I can tell you, you know, mail-wise, I've been getting a lot of people's mail. I don't know why, but I do.
That might be part of the reason that the editor requested a phone call or an email when this check was ready, and it could have been picked up. That is how it's been done all along? I don't know why that process changed.
Michelle, do you see any possibility that this can be worked out moving into the future, apart from committee work here during the town meeting?
What exactly do you want me to answer that could be worked out?
I'm not sure myself.
Well, then I can't be sure either.
Because I had trouble following all of what you were saying. But it certainly sounds like you and the board need to talk with each other, or the newsletter committee needs to talk with each other, or somebody needs to talk with each other, because there certainly has been enormous amount of hurt and bad vibes over the past year.
Two years, actually. And I'm not implying that there was anything deliberate on your part that this happened, but the way that we, as a team, have been treated over the last two years for the whole gamut, okay? I mean, we all know what's going on. The fact that the check never showed up, I mean, how would you feel? I mean, we've been kicked down the road for two years, so our feeling that maybe was it deliberate, I don't know. But how would you feel?
Well, I can tell you, nothing was deliberate.
Great, that's good to hear. I'm very happy to hear that. When our request wasn't processed, no check ever arrived. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Michelle. Now, other folks that would like to speak to this issue? And especially being sure that we stick pretty close to the warrant article, because the warrant article again, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $11,781 for the purpose of printing, postage, and distribution costs for the eight issues of the newsletter. We're talking mainly about saying yes to the amount of money. And I realize that there is this backstory stuff all over the place, but we're going to stick fairly close to the warrant article. Yes?
Suzy Curtis, 15 Allen Drive. I want to make sure that the warrant article is worded correctly. The Brentwood Newsletter is an incorporation, it's a private entity with the state of New Hampshire, and that legal name is not worded in the warrant article. It's not listed as an incorporated entity. So I want to be voting for the private entity if that's what we're intending to fund, because when we vote to fund vendors with the town, we choose that vendor specifically because we feel it's the most appropriate vendor to be spending money on.
Would you like to offer an amendment to clean up that portion of the warrant article?
Can I finish speaking, please? Can I finish talking?
Sure.
Because we have, we choose vendors for lots of things. With landscaping in the baseball field, we choose a landscaping vendor, and if we don't like the way that the baseball field is being cleaned up, we choose a different landscaping vendor. The same could be true with the Brentwood Newsletter, or a newsletter, a gazette, a magazine, whatever we'd like to call it. If there was another vendor that could perhaps pitch to do the newsletter at a lower cost or in a different way, that is an option. So I want to make sure that we are wanting to spend this appropriate amount of money towards the Brentwood Newsletter Incorporated specifically in this warrant article. So if I'm not going to make that motion, I think somebody should make that motion to make sure that the legal entity name is on the warrant article.
Mr. Moderator? Yes, sir. Each warrant article is passed to the state of New Hampshire for their review and accuracy and correct reporting of the warrant article. And our legal class. So you're saying that...
Well, not to be defensive here, but...
Still are?
Yes, because there's no way that you can expect our office, when reviewing an article like this, to know that maybe you're thinking about two different entities, because we don't have ESP.
We rely mostly on the state of New Hampshire for reviewing of all of our warrants.
But there's no way the state of New Hampshire, DRA, first of all, cares about whether there's two entities or one entity that possibly has money to be spent for. And so their review doesn't encompass that type of question.
In many states, Walter, the corporate law, or the word "the" indicates incorporation. I'm not sure how it applies in New Hampshire. If you can help us with that question.
I think the problem here is the questioner has raised the question, but apparently she's not willing to propose an amendment to the article. So without amendment, there's going to be some continuing confusion, which is not good for anybody.
May I interject? As I read the article, it's "The Brentwood Newsletter," and newsletter is capitalized. That is the name of the entity, so it's not just a random Brentwood publication. It's "The Brentwood Newsletter." So I'm not sure that the residents' question is an actual concern, but that would be the way I would perceive it, that it's written as it should be.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, I'm Kate Parks, 116 Allen Grove. I've been here for about 30 years, and I've always enjoyed the newsletter, the Brentwood Newsletter. I especially enjoyed it when everyone was quoted, the old timers, when they were all quoted on what they said. I gotta believe I just enjoyed that. And every meeting is written, and Linda Grant can do it. My question is, would it be less expensive if it was put online? I don't know. I'm not a technical person, but I just wonder if it would be a little less...
I believe it is online awesome.
It appears to me there's more issues going on.
Can I address that for more? Speaking on behalf of the Brentwood Newsletter, there was a survey done a few years back asking if you wanted to receive it digitally or physically, and I don't remember the numbers exactly, but the vast majority wanted to receive it in hand. That is why we continue to do it that way.
Yes, sir.
Patrick Markku, 24th April, Gordon Road. I agree, it's an online version. I've lived in the town most of my conscious life, and I've always enjoyed receiving newsletter. My first town meeting, I came here, and this warrant article was presented then. And a lot of the language surrounding that warrant article raises some questions for the one today. It was my understanding that when we voted to fund the warrant article and that by extension the Brentwood Newsletter back in that town meeting, it was somehow incorporated into the town operating budget already, as we did with many other nonprofits and volunteer organizations. I was wondering, at what point was this subtracted from the budget article, and under what authority was that done? And why is it now a separate warrant article, and it's already in the budget as it was previously?
As a result of the issue that arisen in March of last year, the citizens requested that there be changes made, and that's what you're seeing this morning. We had a meeting at the DRC, and we had over 100 people in attendance, and like I said earlier, the vast majority wanted to continue the publication of the newsletter. And some voiced a lot of objections to the content. So there was some tweaking going on. It was removed from the town website. It now stands alone, and personally, I think that is the correct way of doing it. During those processes, the board made the decision to bring it up in the form of warrant articles. Any other questions?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Does this apply for all other nonprofits that town funds? Does the board of selectmen reserve the executive right to withdraw funding, regardless if the town had voted three times to appropriate the money previously at town meetings?
Yes, each board has its own right to review all of the expenditures of the town. What happened last year is not necessarily going to happen next year.
So if we don't like Meals on Wheels for some reason, you guys make the executive decision to just unfund them and make the warrant article by the subsequent date?
No, that's not what we're talking about.
So Meals on Wheels, for example, would be one of our regional associations, and we have a committee that basically reviews those regional associations. There's already a budget that's set up, and they review those. So it's different than, and I still refer to the Brentwood Newsletter as almost like a subscription service. It's an outside entity, whether they're nonprofit, whatever they do on that side, just kind of like when we buy salt, we're paying for service. We did have people that requested that we actually do it as a warrant article. We honored that based on that meeting we had. And then you'll see in the next warrant article that's going to come up, we're asking for kind of an advisory straw vote of, do people want this to go back into the budget like normal, or would they like us to continue as a warrant? And that's why the select board funded it for the first three articles. First three months, we funded the Brentwood Newsletter, agreed to fund the newsletter, and then the next eight issues would be under this warrant. And then the next warrant that's going to come up is going to be saying, do you want us to continue with doing it as a warrant, or do you want it to be back into the budget like normal? The way we used to do a lot of the regional associations, if you remember this, is we would have hour-long discussions about, you know, this entity wants $1,000, this entity wants $500. We streamlined that by creating a committee that specifically goes through and reviews, you know, the regional association committee, that reviews who's asking for what those terrible donations, how they service our community, who they service, how many people, and then also looking at their financials. That way, we're not looking at it all here during a meeting. They're committing all that work history on it. So kind of two different animals, but hopefully...
I understand. I was under the impression that we, I remember this distinctly, that we would vote on every time a nonprofit came, and if they received three consecutive votes in favor of their funding, that item was automatically incorporated into the next year's budget. I knew that drew some flak at that point. My question, I guess, is on the legality. If we, as a town, at some point have in fact voted in favor of funding the Brentwood newsletter, I'm assuming many years before, many of us who were in this room were alive, in favor of that and therefore it was incorporated. I was under the impression that since the whole town in this deliberative body, as the legislative body of the town of Brentwood, voted in favor of that, would we need a vote to rescind that as the town instead of an act of the vote of selectmen?
Yeah, you wouldn't need a vote to take it out. The money appropriation is, you know, one year. So like whatever you guys vote today, you can't buy next year's unless it's a special warrant. So like number 13 is basically everyone here advising us that they want us to have it back into the budget. And that's a second warrant in this one.
Then, I have one last question. Why isn't this same treatment extended to every other nonprofit? We choose the town to at one point fund, and then at a later date, why don't we have to bring that up at every other subsequent meeting? Why is it just singled out for this? On a simple legal, why are we singling out this nonprofit out of all the other nonprofits?
Money management.
Extending this singular treatment to this particular one?
It's the management of the money, looking in at the request of people that were vocal at that meeting that we had, that they wanted this specifically to be under a warrant. The regional associations, we've streamlined that. We actually don't have all those warrants now because they have to go through our welfare director, and they have to go through a whole process through the regional association. And I know Becky Dunne probably speaks to that a little bit more, because she's the chair of that committee.
But I want to break in here for a minute. I think in discussing warrant article 12, we get to sliding over into discussing warrant article 13. I believe that's what Bob was pointing out earlier. And we're really not discussing warrant article 13 right now. We'll get to it. We'll get to the issues that you've been bringing up. But warrant article 13 is strictly, as I understand, warrant article 12, if I understand it correctly, we're just talking about money for the one coming year. That's all we're talking about. We're preserving the life as it is for the coming year in warrant article 12, with the $11,781. And once we have determined yes or no to that, then we'll get into this fuller discussion that we're having with warrant article 13. So I would ask first, is there further discussion related to warrant article 12?
Yes.
Any discussion related to warrant article 12, which is strictly the money?
It looks like there's a lot of discussion lined up.
Oh, and let me end and drop my tongue here, because we do have an answer for warrant article number one, which is? Warrant article number one, the yes was 173, the no was 10, and the blank was 7. I think we've met... I think we've met the three-fifths request. Yes, there was a motion to not reconsider. And a second to it. Are you ready to vote? Let me, I want to be careful about this. All those in favor? I'm sorry, point of order, we're discussing warrant article 12 right now. Excuse me? Point of order, we're discussing warrant article 12 right now. No, we are discussing it, but we have the right to make a decision about warrant article one at this point before we continue on. I want to ask if you are ready to vote on warrant article number one. All those in favor? I want to know if you're voting in favor of reconsidering article one.
The bond is, the bond hour is up, so we're making a motion to not reconsider.
Reconsider. Thank you. All those opposed to restricting reconsideration?
Valid and vote. You don't need to reconsider a valid vote.
All those in favor of restricting reconsideration? Thank you. It passed. Warrant article one. All those opposed? Warrant article one passes. Thank you. Okay, we have actually moved beyond article one. We've moved beyond article two. And now we are again back to the financial aspects of article 12. That's what we're discussing.
Eric Trump, Gordon Road. I'm favorizing this, maybe an age thing, like putting the newsletter online, but I like to get the hard copy. I like to see what's going on in town. That's right there, and I think it's an important part of town, a part of history to town, that the various committees have a place to get their word out to everybody so people know what's going on in town to town. And it's there in front of them, and I think it's an important part of history to town and letting people know what's going on. I'm very much in favor of this.
Thank you, Eric. Yes? Yes?
Hi, Katie DeMora, Sixteen Block Drive. So, I agree with you entirely that most of the takeaway feedback from the select board's discussion at the Ruck Center last year was that people are in favor of the town newsletter. I agree, the volunteers were really hard, and I appreciate all that they've done. Most of the takeaway feedback was around the contract piece of that, and I was wondering if you could speak to anything about kind of what that contract looks like and what the kind of requirements that are being put forward on the Brentwood newsletter. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. I think it's appropriate to discuss the contract because it is still in a very movable fashion. We just recently received notification from the newsletter that they have some questions about it, so it has to be reconsidered. It's a hard one.
The Brentwood newsletter has been published by unpaid volunteers for forty-five years. Please do not let a small group of very unhappy Brentwood residents who lost their seats in the New Hampshire House and Senate a few years ago, and a Brentwood tradition that has provided a unique way to join our town together by sending to each and every home a memory update of all things Brentwood.
Okay, now, we're, we're still focused, thank you, we're still focused on warrant article twelve, the money for the coming year. And then the further, the further fuller discussion will be with warrant article thirteen. Yes, please.
Lisa Burn, Almer East. Speaking to the money portion, I just wanted to understand the comment that was just made about the physical responsibility component of missing one warrant article. And looking at the fact that if I'm reading it correctly, operating budget was almost four million dollars in active spending last year. We just voted four point nine million for this year. So, that's a little perplexing to me that that's the reason why it's a separate warrant article. And I'm also a little surprised that given the significance of the conversation on this topic, that a contract wasn't agreed to between the parties before we get to this juncture. So, how did that happen?
Well, contract negotiations occur all the time in our country. We don't control but one side. The other side has to negotiate and come to us, and we have to come to them. It's still under consideration, so there's nothing more we can say. As far as the cost and the increase, the printer has changed, the cost of postage has increased, and the cost of just putting the product together has increased. So, it's a, in my opinion, it's a very valuable piece of our town, and we should continue it. And the cost is minor compared to the rest of the cost for the community.
I agree with that, of our thing. And I support the newsletter. I just would like to say in closing that I think even the significance of the issue to the town and the amount of time it's consumed, we would have been in a much better situation if the contract matters were resolved before this.
Nobody here disagrees with that. Thank you.
But yet, you are part of the process of getting the contract finalized, and it wasn't finalized apparently.
I interpret that to mean that we were part of the problem. The mic's not on. I agree with the previous statement that we were part of the problem, and we are doing our best to resolve it.
May I respond to your question, please?
True.
The short version of why is there no contract is because the Brentwood newsletter was never reached out to, to discuss or negotiate a contract. That's why there's no contract.
I'll just say from my perspective, that's disappointing, if that's how you're doing it.
It's disappointing to all. It's disappointing to all of us. And it is a two-way street. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still on warrant article twelve. Mr. Chairman, I just want to speak to the idea of electronic newsletter and say that it's a great idea from a conservation standpoint. Who wants to, who wants to kill me?
I, I think that's in warrant article eighteen.
I, I think it's going to affect the budget, Mr. Chairman, and the budget is a matter of warrant article twelve. Okay? So, if we change this to electronic article, the conservation commission will not reach a lot of people through the newsletter. As a person on the board of other organizations here in town, I can tell you that some of our most treasured members are folks who aren't online, aren't online as much as younger people or more computer-centered people. Yet, they're among the most important folks that we have. So, I'm in favor of keeping the paper newsletter. I like to read it myself. I like to stick it in my fire and read it when I'm sitting waiting for someone. And it's about six dollars a year for a household to do that, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I want to address the choir speaker on the contracts. We did have a contract that was written up and sent over in January. We got a response yesterday on the contract that was sent over. So, contracts don't happen overnight. Sometimes it takes a while, go back and forth. And I know there was some review on the Brentwood newsletter staff, so that's how some of these processes do take some time.
Sorry, Dick, I forgot my card. I'm Katie Paul, I live in Twenty One Dolphin. My concern for a vote for whether I want to fund it is I've never received it in the mail, ever, since I moved here five years ago. So, how do we?
I believe you have to sign up for it at the town hall.
I did, I did sign up for it, but I just still never received it. So, I guess that's, I'm just worried if, I know it's only six dollars, but if I'm not going to receive it, why would I vote to fund it when I signed up for it? So, I guess that's my only concern, because my hand is something I'd like to get. Because I didn't read it, but I did it from the library, because it's not delivered to my house.
If I may, if this does pass and the newsletter does actually continue, please come up and give me your name and address, and I will make sure to get on the list.
And I appreciate that. I just wanted to make it clear on that. Some people just don't get it. And I didn't know you could sign, I mean, I did know you could, because I did sign up when I registered to vote. But maybe some people didn't know that's how you get the newsletters, by signing up to receive them. I guess I've been everywhere.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Excuse me for one second, please, Richard. Daphne just said if you want to sign up for the newsletter in the future, you can also do that at town hall.
So, might I understand that prior to this warrant, the Brentwood newsletter was out of the operating budget? How long?
Forty years.
Okay.
Forty-five years, I believe.
So, based on why did that negate those forty years?
Based on the request, when we had that public meeting, I think that was May, in May, that it be pulled up and put as a warrant article so we can have a discussion on the floor like we are today.
Okay, so, based on an article that happened a year ago or two years ago, which I wrote, all of a sudden, thirty and forty years of history goes down the tubes. All because a minority of people decided, don't interrupt me, because this is part of how I'm going to make my decision. And I think a lot of people do the same thing. I'm a little bit perplexed, but at, and the longer I, the more I attend these meetings, the more I seem to feel like there's a tremendous undercurrent here that is not being spoken to. I don't know what it is, but you're going to take forty years of success, successful funding, and you're going to turn it into a yearly decision? Something's fishy. And I'll do it, I'll say it again. I wrote that article in good faith. Now, I know there was all the mechanizations that took place here that turned it into something it was not. But to use that article at that time to create this kind of controversy is wrong. This community is served extremely well by the Brentwood newsletter. You're telling me that now it's going to be an annual vote if this goes through and not out of the budget? I don't think it's right. I will vote to support this funding, but you have a responsibility to make this right.
And that's what the next warrant article will be, is whether or not we put it back the way it was. I think this is an extremely valuable resource. I think having articles that are put in there that create discussion and help to move understanding is, is valuable. And so, you kind of try to restrict discussion and thoughtful articles that spark discussion is intolerant, I kid that. We have to try to let people have discussions like this so we can understand. And also, this governing body only meets once a year to help us move things forward. And so, that's why we have this warrant article forward, is because it was requested, and we agreed to do that, just kind of like what we used to do before, and then we created the regional associations to kind of help streamline that. That's what the next warrant is going to be, is do you guys want to put it back in the newsletter and continue like we did for forty-five years? Or do you want it to continue every year? That's, that's what it is.
Yes, Jim? To your point, I would, I'm dead set against any penny being spent on this because your attempt to throw a contract at the Brentwood newsletter to neuter it renders your arguments of thoughtful conversation in the Brentwood newsletter irrelevant. So, I would urge fellow citizens to vote against this. Yes?
Hi, Kate Bonafini, Pocket Road, and I was just, I want to say that the Brentwood newsletter has been fantastic. We didn't sign up for it. We arrived here ten years ago, and it arrived in our mailbox. And I was like, wow, this is a really cool thing. It tells me all this information about Brentwood, and I think it's really important that we continue to fund it. I will say, given that the contract is pending, I'd like to propose an amendment to the current warrant article. And it's, I'll read my amendment and then just point out the change. It's to see that the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars for the proposed printing, postage, and distribution costs of eight issues of Brentwood newsletter, oh, excuse me, of a Brentwood newsletter once a contract has been established. And this is just because this one issue is still pending, and if the contract falls through, we would still have the ability to have a Brentwood newsletter in some form or, or another.
You're presenting that as an amendment?
Yes.
Is there, do you have that in writing?
Yes.
And is there a second to that?
May I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
So, you are deliberately changing it from the Brentwood newsletter to a Brentwood newsletter so that it may not be the Brentwood newsletter that we know. Is that correct?
Because there's not a contract, and that's in current, I don't want to leave something that's completely up in the air and say, well, we're just going to put this money in. Yes, so I'm deliberately changing it to a Brentwood newsletter so that we will continue to have a Brentwood newsletter.
Was there a second to that?
It might change the intent.
We're speaking, we're speaking now only to the amendment that David proposed. Would you again tell us the words that you've added and or changed?
So, what I've changed is from the Brentwood capital newsletter to A capital B Brentwood lowercase n newsletter.
No.
Oh, no, but just, I'm just proposing an amendment, or you can vote no to the amendment.
Okay, that, that's the amendment that we're agreeing on.
And then the second part is, once a contract has been established, it's added onto the end.
We're giving up our power as a governing body by doing that. So, today we have a say as a governing body, everyone that took the time to be here, a couple hundred people, right? If we, if we go forward with that amendment, what you're saying is that five-member board of, board of selectmen will decide everything. So, you're, you're taking away the power of all the voters that took two and a half hours to show up here.
Taking away the power to allow the entity of the Brentwood newsletter to get that money.
Mr. Moderator, point of order, that is changing the intent of the warrant article, which cannot happen.
I think there was a question as to what the intent of the warrant.
The intent of the Brentwood newsletter, very specific intent.
Right, I think the question was.
You changed it, excuse me, you changed it, you asked me, and I'm going to answer you. You changed it to A Brentwood newsletter, that changes the intent of the article.
I believe the Brentwood newsletter is an incorporated name too, so it might have to be Brentwood publication, I don't know.
Or A Brentwood newsletter, newsletter isn't an incorporated name. If Brentwood is.
That is an incorporated name.
B Brentwood, right, which is why I'm changing it from, to A, capital B Brentwood, which is our town, and a newsletter lowercase n.
And that's what you cannot do, that's.
Okay, then I'll say, excuse me, I would like to change it to a Brentwood town publication.
You're doing the same thing, you can't change the intent. It says the Brentwood newsletter, that is the intent.
There is a common misunderstanding that you can't change the intent of the article. That is inaccurate. What the statute says is you can't change the subject of the article. And the court, the, our Supreme Court has issued rulings quite broadly that you can, you can certainly change the intent of it. I would, let me provide some focus here. I'm sitting here concerned that this court, I mean, I'm sorry, that this town is going to end up in litigation in which, over which the court is going to have to rule, what is the impact of not having a capital letter at the beginning of the word the, as presently written, and having a, a capital N in the newsletter? Do you really want that for this town, or for the court, frankly? But, going back to the basic, yes, it is legal to change the intent of an article. You can't, as long as you don't change the subject matter of the article, and that subject matter is viewed quite broadly.
Kate, you are within your right to withdraw the motion if you wish.
I do not.
Would you continue on?
I'd like to continue on.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Would you, would you read it again so that we can know again what we're considering to vote on as an amendment?
To see that the town of Brentwood will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars for the purpose of printing, postage, and distribution costs of eight issues of a Brentwood newsletter once a contract has been established.
That's, that's what we're discussing. And if, if there's nobody to discuss that, then I'll ask if you're ready to vote.
I would like to say.
Yes.
Now, if it's two twenty-two, no, wait. The proposed amendment would make an unequivocal warrant article equivocal. There is no guarantee that any contract would ever be executed. I oppose the amendment, and I urge everyone in the room to oppose it as well. The article was presented as approved by the select board, at the request of the town, the request was made. This kind of equivocation cannot exist in a legal document. So, I don't, I don't believe the amendment's appropriate. I believe we should vote on the warrant article as originally presented.
Michelle Stewart, no, wait. Since we're talking about intent, I'm curious, where did you go? What your endgame would be here? So, if there's no contract between the town and the Brentwood newsletter, what are you then asking for?
That the money not be spent. Right, that we can't come up with a contract, then we shouldn't be spending the money.
Well, then, if that was your intent, you would leave it as the Brentwood newsletter. But you're saying A Brentwood, small n newsletter. So, what is your endgame here?
I don't have an endgame. I would, I would think that if, if the Brentwood newsletter can come up with a proper contract, just like any other entity in town, perhaps some other. contract, just like any other entity in town, perhaps some other organization can create a similar thing, where we can have people present what town meetings are and have people put forward what the Baptist church is doing, right? And have that.
Can we have her come to a mic?
Sorry, yes. I think that there's, the Brentwood newsletter gives forward a lot of great things and I want that to continue to go forward, even if "the" Brentwood newsletter can't come up with a contract which is appropriate, then perhaps another entity could. And this would leave that open, that that would be available as well.
Then I am solidly opposed to this amendment.
Go, go, go.
Nine block drive. I can make an argument that the reason for a contract is simply political. This has everything to do with a couple politicians in this room have had their feelings hurt because of a couple articles that took place. That is the reason that they want a contract. That is the only reason. Above and beyond that, this is the United States of America, it is a free country, and we still have a First Amendment.
Ward Burn, Rowdy Strum, in the East. This has been a tear in for your community for about two years now, because this gentleman wrote and submitted an article, racism in the view of a white man. And it's pretty much torn and divided this community. And being a resident here, born and raised, 54 years, April 18th this year.
Happy birthday!
It's twenty-something to see this divide. And this divide of half the community wants this and the other half wants that, and there's no common ground anymore. And it's really discouraging. Somehow, it was wrong what this gentleman did writing that article, in all fairness. You voted in a selectman that wrote an article, racism in the view of a white woman. I find that highly hypocritical, that we punish the newsletter for this man's article, yet we vote in an elected official. What's really going on here? Is it a great divide? I don't know, but it's wrong. And I think it's wrong that the newsletter is required to have a contract. There's no other contracts for a volunteer group in town. It's smoke and mirrors, and it is wrong. I think if you want to work with the newsletter, you should sit down at the table with the representatives of the Brentwood newsletter and work like human beings for a common goal and stop this nonsense. I urge you to vote against that amendment and let's get on with this, it'd be normal working together, human beings.
I want to try something. I think we've heard a lot from both sides. I just want to check first of all and ask, how many, how many of you are now in favor of voting on the amendment? How many are opposed to voting on the amendment?
I would like to speak.
I would say that you're in favor of voting on the amendment, which is what we will do.
I would like to speak on the amendment.
Excuse me?
I would still like to speak on the amendment.
I'd like to say something.
You can say something because you were in line.
I almost forgot. Kate Card, one student in the row, I'd like to vote.
I'll second that. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Close discussion, point of order. The point of order, close discussion. Close discussion, vote on the amendment.
Mr. Moderator, are we voting on what Ms. Fox just said, to move the person?
No.
Okay.
Voting, voting.
No.
We're voting on the amendment that was made by the last person.
By Kate. We're voting on the amendment that was made by Kate. And I'm asking you first of all...
No! The amendment was not made by Kate.
Quite a lot of them, yeah, I think.
I do, the chairman, the moderator needs a little help here.
Number 11.
Except we have to deal with the amendment. Yes, sure.
Dave Jones, 34, I can like. I would like to support the amendment, particularly the contractual part of it, because, I mean, again, being else a vendor, and like all our vendors, we hopefully have contracts. If not, we should, I mean, if there are other vendors in town we don't have contracts with, that also would concern me. I mean, I don't spend money as a homeowner unless someone tells them what they want to get them, in and writing, pretty much often. If the guy didn't fertilize my lawn, he'd be like 45 pages of how to fertilize my lawn. And that just fertilized my lawn. So, I mean, me, I guess, if we're a town, we're buying a product. Why do we not want to know what that product is that we're buying in writing? I mean, this is how, I mean, we talk about not getting paid. Contracts, that's how we're going to get paid. That'll be in the contract, and the town would have to do it. If the contract said, email us, they would have to, excuse me, I'm speaking, thank you. If the contractor signed a phone call, private check, I'm sure they would call you, because it'll be in the contract. This is what contracts are for. Isn't contracts, excuse me, I'm speaking. He is, he is speaking. Isn't this, all of this, how we resolve, I work in a business, everybody do it at other contracts. I can't write it unless it's in writing. That's how business works. Handshakes were in the 1800s. We don't have handshakes, you know, we have words, you're right to me. Like, I think we should have a contract for everything in town spends money on. If I find out the town's spending is $10,000, here $50,000, there are handshakes, that would all really worry me. Like, we should have all of this stuff.
I think you made your thought, sir.
Thank you.
I want to do this. I'd like to have the amendment read again. To see that the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $11,781 for the purpose of printing, postage, and distribution costs of eight issues of "a" Brentwood newsletter, once a contract has been established. That is the amendment. Now I'd like to ask if you are ready to vote on the amendment. Go ahead.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Because this was moved up, I missed much of the conversation, which is hard for parents with young kids. May I make a quick comment?
Yes.
Yes, there should be a contract. It should be "a" Brentwood newsletter, because as of right now, the current newsletter that we have been working with for how many other years has yet to produce the agreed-upon articles. And they have not agreed to make contact with the town that have to come to the table. That is dishonest for our community, and our community does deserve a newsletter. I hope that we can find a way to come together and find a way to work with the newsletter, whether it be a town committee or something inside the town, and not outside. Thank you guys for bringing this to the board and our town.
We go back to the movement to vote.
Yeah, we have.
I'm going to ask now, how many are in favor of voting on the amendment? Okay? Any vote? Okay, we are voting on the amendment as I just read. Two men, voting two men, as I just read. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay?
Nay!
Okay, I hear a lot of noise with the dais, and I see a fairly even distribution of votes, so I'd like the Congress to count it, because we want to be fair about this. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand and hold them up until we're counted.
This is in favor of the amendment?
In favor of the amendment, thank you.
In favor of the amendment. Okay, all those who are opposed to the amendment. And the majority is going to rule. This is what we've been calling pure democracy. Which is tough, which is tough. Okay, the amendment is defeated, just closely, 72 noes, 68 yes. Move the motion. Second? Are you voting the original option? The original unamended motion. And it's seconded, but I'm going to check first to see if you're ready to vote. All those in favor of voting...
Mr. Moderator, before we proceed, I have a legal question for the lawyer.
Yes. Oh, Walter.
Mr. Legal Counsel, I guess this also has come across the board a little bit. Do any other of the nonprofit 504s or any other town contracts, like, similar to the Brentwood newsletter, have contracts?
I don't think we have anything similar to the newsletter, but no, we don't have any other contracts with the nonprofit associations.
Is the Brentwood newsletter a nonprofit?
My understanding is aye.
Legal counsel, does that open the town up to further requests from other nonprofits for contracts? And does that open the town up to having all of these apply or be necessary to require a contract to receive town funding? If we vote, I mean, I guess we already have a provision that requires the Brentwood newsletter to have a contract, does that have to be extended to the similar entities? Is my question.
Contract was voted down, amendment was voted down.
It was my understanding that the town was in some form of contract negotiation prior to this meeting and prior to that amendment being motioned. I could be entirely wrong, but I believe that was a pretty hot early item of discussion.
You are correct. However, when you mentioned the nonprofits, they're basically an application that goes through a process by committee to include a welfare officer, and their request is either denied or granted based on their service to Brentwood residents.
Yes, so we already agreed with that with the Brentwood newsletter when we voted to fund that, I believe is what you're saying. This subsequent contract that we're trying to do on this 504 post-funding, previous funding, or your vote is this warrant article, does this cause the rest of the 504s the town funds to then also require a contract if they receive the same form of funding? Or is this just a double standard that we're not going to afford to cross the board? Is this legal?
Yes, yes, no, no, I agree.
I'm asking the legal counsel, thank you.
He's not moving. I wasn't moving because I responded to the request of the moderator. No, I don't think it exposes the town in any way that they chose to have a contract or tried to have a contract with one entity and not with another, a written contract. I'm going to ask him, I'm going to try asking him.
It's time to move the motion.
If you're ready to, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor, are you ready to vote? Vote, come on!
Real quick.
No, we have a motion on the floor to vote.
I wait to move forward.
Go ahead.
Okay, so just really quick, about the funding, if we vote, and we're probably going to fund it like we do every year, then that means that we're going to move on, right? Because we hear so much about this every year, we're embarrassed in multiple communities around us by all the shenanigans. I would simply request that the select board honor this vote and move on. We want to read what's in the newsletter, we want to hear about our neighbors, we want to hear about, I want to hear about neighbors who cannot stand my politics and disagree with me all the time. That's what I go to, I flip to the opinion section and I read all this stuff, folks who disagree with me, I want to hear that kind of stuff. But let's move on and stop talking about the newsletter itself. This is simple, we're voting for the funding, and let's not drag it through the mud for another few years. That's all, that's all we're asking.
It's time to vote. I hear that it's time to vote.
I'd just like to ask, pointing to one simple question about the contract, you know, this legislative body here voting today, if we vote to support the Brentwood newsletter, I think we all know what we're voting for. So can't that be the contract or the selecting, which just simply makes certain that they have an invoice, you know, monthly basis, but then they simply write the check, they don't start an editorial process between members of the board of selectmen as to what they're going to allow, in terms of before that they give out that check? It seems like if we vote for it, we're voting to support the Brentwood newsletter, as it's been for a long time, then it'll be a simple matter of just writing the check, not playing games, you know, each month, sending the check out, maybe just send one check per year for the $11,000, period, and clean up all this.
My sense is that we have said everything in the world about warrant article 12, and we've still got warrant article 13 to really get into. All those in favor of warrant article number 12 signify by sending aye. Those opposed?
I just have a simple question.
Warrant article 12.
Mr. Moderator, is that someone, a member who's asking a question?
I know, I told you, yes.
I thought she was a written ballot vote for.
Yeah, that too. But also, my question is, if we vote to allocate the funding with this article 12, is there still going to be a contract put in place? Like, if we're funding today, what is the status of this contract that is still pending?
Unresolved.
Unresolved.
Because if we're giving them money now, what is the incentive to give that contract place?
It's unresolved at the moment, and there is, there is the opportunity to speak further to it in the next one. Warrant article 12 has passed.
Paper ballot vote for.
Yes. There is... There is a request for a secret ballot. My question is, did you want that for what we've just been talking about? Or did you want that for the fuller discussion tomorrow, which is coming up next? Which? Mr. Moderator.
Excuse me, sir.
Mr. Moderator, sorry to interrupt the discussion by saying the paper ballot request on Warren Article twelve. That's what we've been offering you. Okay. Okay, obviously I missed that.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Point of order of, you're accepting some conversation, I'm right here, sir. You're accepting some people talking over the people who are standing at the microphone. Another piece that I will bring up again is, we have paid them already for February a margin, have yet to see it. We issued the check. The check was issued. I am not going to speak over the members in town again. The check was issued. The whole thing from this summer, where an editorial versus opinion has yet to have been resolved and no editorial is funded. We as a town to be quieting ourselves in being able to have a conversation and discussion appropriately. Having not even a basic understanding of editorial versus opinion and what is published and what we are paying for as a town matters. An opinion matters, yes. An editorial, which is something that is funded and paid for by the editor and also at that point, the town, which means that letter that was an editorial means it's the same opinion as the rest of the town. An editorial is a sponsored opinion by the paid party.
That's your opinion.
Okay, thank you.
I'm really, this is how our top members communicate.
Thank you.
I agree with you, Cam.
Okay, I, let me try this. You are correct that the request for secret ballot was on Warren Article number twelve. Although Warren Article number twelve is only focused on money for the coming year. I'm wondering, I'm wondering if you wish, I'm just posing this as a possibility. If you wish to withdraw the request for secret ballot for Warren Article twelve and fold it until we've had a fuller discussion on Warren Article thirteen. No, you don't think so, okay? Well, if that's the case, we're in the business of Warren Article number twelve. It doesn't require a full hour because it's not a bond issue. We can resume, fully resume as soon as everybody's voted and it's counted and we know what it is. Anyone want to say it? Yeah, please come right back to your seats after you have voted.
Mr. Moderator?
Are we set to vote?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I don't know how we confuse this thing like a ham sandwich, but I thought we already voted on the article.
I thought we did too, but I was...
We took a raise of hands.
We did, we did, but Ward, I was in error forgetting that there had been a request for a secret ballot.
Did you get the five signatures?
Yes.
I mean, I could draw that for twelve?
Excuse me?
If we passed it, can I now withdraw the request for ballot vote? What, I mean, what?
Yes, you, as one of, is everybody agreed to this? That's the ones that are silent.
Can we talk to the microphone, Dave Socky? Do we know what's being said?
Okay, very touching, please. The vote that I just asked you to take, which you took, is invalid because of the fact that earlier I had been asked to set up a secret ballot for it. However, if you wish to withdraw having a secret ballot, then that can be done, and we can continue to move on. Where are you all on that?
My question is, was that vote we took?
No.
No. Then you do have a party. Okay, all right.
Same thing, yes, no, a simple check, par. Go for it.
I've heard so rarely that, you know, like, well, now if we could give up goldfish, my, my, my...
Congratulations.
Doesn't mean, I'm chucking you real often.